Some introductions. I am James Repetti, the moderator for the Town of Dover, and in that role I will oversee tonight's proceedings. To my right, we have the Board of Selectmen. If you raise your hand, please, as I call you Robin Hunter, Chair, John Jeffries, and Robert Springett, our interim Town Administrator Carl Valenti, Town Council Nina Pickering Cook, Assistant Moderator David Havlin, and Town Clerk Felicia Hoffman. Over on the far side of the stage, we have the Warrant Committee Melissa Herman, Chair, Jerry Chin, Cam Hudson, Gordon Kender, Sarah Kadina Kenny, Steve Magowski, Janet McCormick, Peter Smith, and Woody Weiss. A few words on our procedure and tradition. The beginning of the Blue Book, which you all have a copy of, summarizes the basic rules for town meeting, but let me emphasize a few key points. Before each article, I will state the subject matter of the article and then recognize a person to make a motion on that article. The full text of each of these articles is printed in the Blue Book, and in most cases the Warrant Committee has included a summary of their position on the article in the Blue Book. If you do not bring your Blue Book with you tonight, please raise your hand and someone will bring one to you. Does everybody have a copy? Oh, we need one over here, Andre, a couple. And also over here. Chris? Chris? There are two people up front here, too. I guess he's going to have to get a few more copies. Okay. While he's doing that, let me continue. If you wish to discuss a motion, you must be recognized by the moderator before speaking. You will note that there are three microphones in the front of the auditorium. One microphone is marked "yes" as for those persons wishing to speak in support of an article. The microphone marked "no" is for those wishing to speak in opposition of the article. You may raise your hand now for the Blue Book again. And the one with a question mark is for those who simply have questions or who wish to call the question. If you wish to speak, please proceed to one of the microphones. I will alternate among the three microphones in calling upon people to address the town meeting. In addition, I appreciate that some may not be able to stand in line. If you are unable to stand in line, please raise your hand if you wish to address town meeting on a particular matter. I will direct somebody to bring you a microphone, and I will alternate between those standing in line and those who wish to remain seated with respect to being designated to speak. After you are recognized, please identify yourself as well as your street address and speak directly into the microphone. The power switch will already be on. It is important to remember that brevity is the soul of wit. I would like to remind all our speakers tonight that the longer and more complex your presentation, the greater the chance that you will confuse rather than persuade. To save time and allow as many people as possible the opportunity to speak, we limit persons presenting a motion to eight minutes and comments from the floor to two minutes. Please try to limit your remarks to new facts or new perspectives. Repeating what has already been said is unlikely to help your question and indeed may hurt you if people are anxious to vote on the question. The Assistant Town Moderator Dave Havlin will ring a bell on a stage once when you have 30 seconds left and twice when your two minutes has expired. A couple of other points about our procedure. Every motion that we approve tonight can be brought up for reconsideration up to the point that the town meeting is adjourned. Be sure to stay until the end of the meeting; otherwise, the outcome of your favorite article may be changed. Also, sometimes a citizen will tire of the discussion and make a motion to move the question. If such a motion is made and seconded, we must move to an immediate vote on that motion. All discussion and action on the article is suspended until the motion to move the question is acted upon. If the motion to move the question passes, we then proceed directly to a vote on the main motion without any further discussion. The code of conduct for the tradition of town meeting in Dover has been refined over 185 years. Too many rules and our town meeting will become a game only lawyers can play. Too loose and it will become anarchy. A further word about our conduct. Disagreement is the essence of democracy. It would be a very boring town meeting if we agreed about everything we'll discuss tonight, but it is imperative that we disagree without being disagreeable. Let us honor the memory of all those who sacrificed to give us this great gift of democracy by conducting ourselves in a professional and collegial manner. Emotional outbursts or accusations directed towards individuals or groups have no place here, and they dishonor the memory of those who sacrificed to provide us this great gift of democracy. Before we proceed to the Articles of Warrant, would you please join me in expressing our thanks to the scores of elected and appointed volunteers who comprise our town government as well as the able employees who have enabled the smooth running of our town?[376.31][376.31][applause] Tonight, I would like to especially remember Dover citizens who contributed to Dover's governance and passed away since the last annual meeting. John Pallister, Louis Lou Theodos, Scott Ogilvy, and John Jack Walsh. We mourn the passing of these neighbors and are grateful for the difference they made in the life of our town. As I mentioned, democracy is a wonderful prize that has been preserved through the sacrifice and efforts of millions of our citizens. Let us take a moment to silently recognize those who are putting themselves in harm's way at this very moment in service of a country. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, and may God bless America. I'd like to spend a moment now talking about our voting process. Felicia Hoffman, our Town Clerk, has worked very hard with turning technology to organize the distribution of response cards that you were issued as you entered the high school. When we have a vote, you will have 10 seconds to select Key 1A for "yes" or Key 2B for If your response card does not work during a vote, we ask that you please raise your hand and an attendant will assist you. We will now test the response cards by asking you to either press 1 or 2 upon my signal, and I'll wait for Jessica. Okay, you may vote now. So press either 1 or 2 and check to see whether there's a green light that flashes on your card immediately after you vote. You can vote more than once, but the last vote is the only one registered, and you have 10 seconds for that. Did everybody see a green flash when they... Okay? If you didn't, raise your hand and it'll be issued a new card. We have a gentleman over here. We all set? Okay. Okay. Before we begin tonight's proceedings, it's customary to recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Hunter. Ms. Hunter?
Good evening.
Oh, there's somebody else here? Okay. Okay, Robin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending town meeting this evening. It seems as though we're back to normal after a few years of being outdoors. I wanted to take a moment and just echo Jim's comments. I would really like to thank the Town House staff for all that they do and for all that they do putting town meeting together. We have a skeleton crew these days in the Town House, and please join me in giving them a hand of applause for all they do.[588.16][588.16][applause] So now to the mundane stuff, and I promise my comments will be brief. What we wanted to do today, the Board of Selectmen, is kind of, is to lay the groundwork for you as the various articles are presented. So what we thought we would do is put together the state of the town, and I'm supposed to have a presentation, but I'm not quite sure what happened to it. There it is. Thank you. So first of all, like all of you sitting here and all of you business owners, we are facing the same pressures that you are. We are facing inflationary pressures, and we see those in energy costs, in healthcare costs, and as well as in our labor costs. In addition to that, the tight labor market has really impacted municipalities, including ours. We currently have five open key positions in the Town House, including the Town Administrator. Our infrastructure is aging. Our infrastructure is aging, and that includes our buildings as well as our fleets. We are looking at an astronomical price tag of somewhere around $19 million to replace those over the next few years. Our goal as the Board of Selectmen is to find balance. We want to maintain safety. We want to increase, decrease the rate at which your taxes increase, and we have a hard task ahead of us. The goals and objectives of the Board of Selectmen have focused the last couple of years on a couple of things. Next slide, please. Oh, no, this is good. Sorry, everybody's telling me what to do, and I have to turn around to see what's going on, so... The Board of Selectmen is focused on modernization, and what that means is updating policies and procedures, making sure that our staff has the right tools and technologies to do their jobs. We're very focused on fiscal discipline. We... What we are trying to do there is develop long-range financial models, and this year is one of, is the first year in which we've seen the results of our forecasting. We have created cash reserve policies. What that means is we have set aside cash reserves to fund future known liabilities that we have as a town. What that does for all of you is it stabilizes the tax rate. What we're desperately trying to avoid is big spikes in the tax rate year after year or one year and then not the other. We're also trying to improve communication. It is a challenge for us as to how to communicate to all of our citizens. We are trying new ways on the website. Our digital newsletter, if, for those of you that have seen it, is getting a lot of praise, but we're not sure it's reaching everyone, and that's our goal, to reach all citizens in the town. Next slide, please. I'm going to quickly go through some of the things that we've achieved in the last four years. With modernization, we have begun the process of modernization. We have upgraded the computer systems. Each of our employees do have a computer running the same version of Office 365, so we've come a long way. We're also training our staff and encouraging them to use these tools. Some of what we're asking them to do is new and changes hard, and we want to make sure that they have the training that is necessary so that they can be successful. With respect to financial discipline, next slide, please. We have, we had the Department of Revenue come in and review all of our financial systems. They put together a plan of best practices, and we've begun to implement those. Again, we have a skeleton crew. We have brought in interim seasoned professionals to help us as we begin to fill positions that we desperately need to fill. We have put long-range measures in place. We're not only looking at this year's budget, we're looking out five and 10 years. We want to be prepared. We don't want to be surprised when the town garage falls down. We want to plan for things like that. We also want to make sure that we have enough cash, so we have set up cash reserves with some of our unallocated cash. These cash reserves are set up to fund liabilities. Next slide, please. What we have done with our cash reserves is we are using it to avoid the peaks in our capital spending. As I mentioned, we have nine, we are looking at $19 million of cash, capital expenditures over the next five years, which we will try and spread out much longer, but those capital expenditures create spikes in the tax rate, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So we have set up a fund where we've put aside some of our free cash to help, to help us fund that. We also deployed $4 million of our unallocated cash reserves to offset the debt for the initial cost of the community center. We're also funding the region share of OPEB. That's the retirement benefits that our teachers get. We have an unfunded liability there of approximately $17 million, and we've started to fund that. All of this we're doing to smooth out the tax rate. Our last objective is one that we have not yet been very successful at, but trust me, we are trying very hard, and that is communication. We did update the website, but that was three years ago, and although the website we have today is far superior to what we had three years ago, it's not when we compare it to some of the communities around us. So again, we are going through an upgrade of that website. We have gotten input from the community. We are also trying to understand how all of you get your news, how you keep in touch with the town. We are trying everything. We have social media accounts. We, you know, use the website. We print things out. We have banners in the town green, and still we have citizens say, "I didn't know about that." So we're asking you to help us. If you have any ideas, reach out to us. We would love to hear them. But most of all, thank you all for your support of what we're trying to do here, making Dover a great place.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Before we move to the Articles of the Warrant, it's customary to again recognize the Chairman of the Warrant Committee for a motion governing the conduct of the meeting, Ms. Herman.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following rule be adopted for the conduct of this meeting. Any amendment to a main motion that would increase an appropriation must contain a provision for the source of funds for the increase such that the total amount to be raised and appropriated at the meeting will not be increased.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hudson has seconded. This is a majority vote. Is there any discussion? No discussion, then we'll move to a vote. Please press your pad when I give you the sign. Okay. You may press 1 for "yes" or 2 for "no." You may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, on to Article 1. Article 1 is on page 28 of your Blue Book, so if you turn to page 28. And Article 1 is to hear or act on committee reports and is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Call upon Ms. Herman to make the motion for Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the various reports by the Town Clerk be waived and the reports be received and placed on file.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Hudson has seconded that we waive the reading of the various reports. Is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote on my signal. He may vote now. Okay, motion carries. Okay, Article 2 is to establish salaries for elected officials for the fiscal year 2024. It's on page 29 of the Blue Book. You will also note that you received a handout that is entitled "Revisions to Article 2: Salaries of Elected Officials and Article 4: Operating Budget." That handout shows the current amount for the Town Clerk, so there's a change from the Blue Book to the handout for Article 2. So you will be looking at both page 29 of the Blue Book as well as the handout. I now turn to Mr. Magowski for the motion.
I move that the salaries recommended for elected officials of the town, as shown in the right-hand column of the Warrant Committee report in the Blue Book, except those revised by the handout provided at town meeting and entitled "Revisions to Article 2: Salaries of Elected Officials and Article 4: Operating Budget," be called over by the moderator, and that if no objection is raised to each, they be approved as read.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Magowski. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. So the motion has been made that I will call over the items that are on page 29 of the Blue Book and also the handout, and as I call them over, if you have a question or you are opposed to one of the items that are listed in the salary, please say "hold." If you do not say "hold," then those items for which no hold has been expressed will be deemed to have been approved. So again, this motion is simply authorizing me to read over those items and to ask whether you have a hold for those items. Are there any, is there any questions about the procedure, or is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's move to a vote. Please press 1 for "yes" or 2 for "no" when I give you the signal. You may vote now. Motion carries, 174 to 8. Okay, so I'm now going to read over the items that are on page 29 and also the item that is on the handout for the Town Clerk. If somebody has a question about one of the items or objects, please say "hold." Otherwise, those items will be deemed to have been approved. You'll note that the fiscal year request for 2024 is in the right-hand column, so for Board of Selectmen Chairman, $200. Clerk of the Board of Selectmen, $150. Other members, $100. Assessor, Chairman, $400. Did I hear a "hold"? No? Okay. Other members of the Board of Assessors, $350. Item number 3, Town Clerk, now referred to the handout. The request for fiscal year '24 is $92,584. Planning Board Chairman, $100. Other members of the Planning Board, $50. Constable, there are three constables, each $150. Board of Health Chairman, $150. Other members of the Board of Health, $100. I did not hear any "holds." Okay, hearing no "holds," those items are deemed to be approved. We now move to Article 3, which is on pages 29 to 30 of the Blue Book, which deals with revolving funds. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the following board and department revolving fund limits for fiscal year 2024 pursuant...
Gordon, could you speak more into the microphone, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the following board and department revolving fund limits for fiscal year 2024 pursuant to the provisions of Section 5-16 Finances of the General Bylaws of the Town of Dover. Building Department Gas Inspector, $12,350. Plumbing Inspector, $22,050. Wiring Inspector, $34,500. Board of Health Perk and Deep Hole Inspection Permitting, $40,000. Septic Inspection and Permitting, $50,000. Well Inspection and Permitting, $20,000. Swimming Pool Inspection and Permitting, $10,000. Library Materials Replacement, $5,000. Council on Aging Senior Activities and Transportation, $40,000. Recycling Committee Material Sales Proceeds, $4,000. And further, that the fees charged for these services be credited to the respective accounts and the aforementioned boards or departments be authorized to make expenditures from their respective accounts and for their respective purposes up to the amounts set forth above.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Magowski has seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion dealing with the authorization of amounts from the revolving fund? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote on this. When I give you the signal, please press 1 for "yes," 2 for "no." You may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, Article 4, which is on page 31 of your Blue Book, and also there are corrections to Article 4 in the handout. Again, that's entitled "Revisions to Article 2 and Article 4: Operating Budget." So we're on page, again, 31 of the Blue Book, and also make sure you have the handout for a reference. And this is dealing with the operating budget for our town. Ms. Herman.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a presentation, Ms. Herman? Thank you.
Yes, please, thank you. So if we, if we move on to the first slide, what I was hoping to share is just a little bit of information on our process to get to the budget in Article 4 and the guidance that we gave for this year. And so this is the four-step process. First, as we enter any new year, the departments and the boards across the town are reviewing their final fiscal year 2022 numbers as well as what their spending has started to be year-to-date. Around that time, we issue guidance from the Warrant Committee, and so for fiscal year 2024, it was similar to many recent years of either level service or, where possible, reduced expenditures. For the requests that were above level service, we require documentation and also review. The review came in the form of attendance at our regular meetings with the Warrant Committee through the fall and the winter where they came in and provided presentations. We also worked with the other boards and the Board of Selectmen. This ultimately led us to the open hearing, and at that point, we proposed the total budget of Article 4 as well as the other articles for feedback and for review, and many of the elements of feedback that were provided were updated into what you'll see tonight. If we move to this next slide, thank you. This is an overall view of our budget and our largest contributing areas and how they've changed year-on-year. So the Town Departments, we have a net increase of $981,835, and that's a 5.4% total increase. And then our two other largest contributing areas are Dover Schools with a $408,850 increase, which is just under 4%, at 3.9%. And then Regional Schools for this year, we actually see a small decrease of $4,458, and so this is a, nets to a 0% change. The reason for this is not that the total regional school budget is flat for the year, but Dover's share is actually smaller this year based on being adjusted for enrollment. If we go to the next slide, these are some of the bigger drivers, and by that, really focusing on total dollars rather than percentage in terms of contributions to the increase overall year-on-year. And so the largest increases we have here, first of all, are insurance and pensions. This increased 8.9% in what we're proposing tonight. Dover Schools, again, 3.9%. Public Works and Facilities, 10.6%. Protective Services, 5.6%. We did see a decrease in debt service, and so that decrease of $483,379, or about a 20.6% decrease, helps to offset... decrease, helps to offset some of the increases, but we still did have, in other combined areas, an additional net increase of 597,726, which gets us to our total net increase for the year of $1,386,227, which is 3.3%. How this breaks down is on the next slide in this pie chart, and so, as with prior years, the schools tend to be about 55% of our total town budget. So regional schools, 30%, Dover schools, 25%. And then, many of the categories I've already mentioned tend to be the contributors from there. The next slide will go over some of the estimated revenue sources for the town. And so this funds Article Four, but it also funds Article Five and other areas, and so the total for this is 48 million points, or 48.7 million. The majority of this, which would be 84% for this year, comes from property taxes. And then in order, it's the use of free cash, which we'll discuss later. Fees and charges that are collected as local receipts by the town. And then lastly, state aid, which is about 3% of our overall revenue. On the next slide, this is a review again, and this had been discussed in the Board of Selectmen presentation as well, but cash reserves or free cash is a funding source for the town, and it results from the calculation that's done each year as of July 1 and certified, and that's the community's remaining unrestricted funds from operations of its prior fiscal year. And so the recommended uses of the cash reserves for this year were presented in the annual Blue Book, and the use of cash reserves for different areas is consistent with the financial reserves policy approved over the last two years by the Board of Selectmen, the Warrant Committee, and the Capital Budget Committee. On the last slide here, I wanted to include a breakdown to share with you of this cash reserve use summary. And so the opening balance here of $10,553,160 is our last certified free cash number. We have five total uses listed here. These are contributing to fund different articles that we'll review tonight. First is the operating budget, then capital, then we have three special articles that have funding from the cash reserves or free cash, unpaid bills, and then lastly, Article Twenty-Nine, to reduce the tax rate. So the remaining cash reserve after the sum of these articles for tonight, tonight's annual town meeting, would be $6,568,865. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If I could now ask Melissa, Ms. Herman, if you could read the motion for Article Four?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salaries and expenses recommended by the departments, officers, boards, and committees of the town, as shown in the FY 2024 vested column in the Warrant Committee report in the Blue Book, except those revised by the handout provided to town meeting entitled revisions to Article Two, salaries of elected officials, and Article Four, operating budget, be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that such salaries and expenses are approved, and to meet these appropriations, the town raise such amounts from the tax levy and other general revenues of the town, and transfer the following sums: $100,000 from overlay surplus and $690,000 from free cash.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and I understand that Charles Long wanted to make a motion to amend. So before we move to the vote on this, if I could direct your attention to item number four-twenty-two, which is on page thirty-five of your Blue Book. Mr. Long is, would like to make an amendment for us to consider before we vote on the main motion. Mr. Long?
Charlie Long, 121 Walpole Street. And I move that Article Four be amended in item four-twenty-two, Highway Maintenance, by striking out the appropriation of $855,047 for salaries and, for salaries and inserting in place thereof an appropriation of $644,914. Now, the Blue Book figure here-
Excuse me, Charlie. Can you just ask if there's a second? Do I have a second for the motion? Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Sir, could you just say your name for the record, any address?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Long.
Now, the Blue Book figure here represents an enormous increase in the Highway Department budget, and you might think, well, this is, this has some useful purpose. Well, this increase is not going to the people who are actually doing the work of the Highway Department. This is an increase that amounts to essentially creating a layer of middle management in the Highway Department. Now, to look at a little history here, the previous Highway Superintendent Craig Hughes also served as Fire Chief for a number of years and really needed no layer of middle management to help operate the Highway Department. Currently, the position has been changed in the title from Highway Superintendent to now Director of Public Works. There seems to be a feeling with the Director of Public Works, apparently, that he needs a layer of middle management to supervise the people who are actually doing the work on the highways. Now, the people who are actually doing the work amount usually to something like five or six people. This is not a big group of people that need to be supervised, and Craig Hughes always seemed to be able to handle it pretty well in addition to handling his duties as Fire Chief. I don't see any need why we need to have this enormous increase here. The figure I'm mentioning is an 8% increase from the prior year, which should be more than enough to create any, to handle any needs that we have for the department. So I think we need to have a sense of a little economy here and not go wild on adding positions to the town payroll. I think most people here are probably not aware of what's been happening over the past few years, as we've had Zoom meetings for the Warrant Committee for three years here. And Zoom meetings basically have meant that the citizen input on what's been happening in the budget has been pretty much nonexistent. And in each of the meetings that has happened over the past three years at Zoom, there have been substantial additions to the salary, number of salaried employees of the town. And you should understand that these additions to the salaries employee, salaried employees of the town, these are relatively permanent expenditures that get larded into the whole budget of the town year after year.
Thirty seconds, Charlie.
And this is something that you should be aware of. The town is growing, but it's not growing very fast, and these, these additional salaries each year represent a substantial increase, but it's not just the salaries. It's also the retirement and the healthcare. That all comes under a separate budget item. So you should understand what's going on here. This is a really substantial and unnecessary increase.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any discussion? Ms. Hunter?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Charlie. What I wanted to do was just give everybody an overview of what is, what the Highway Department budget is comprised of. So I put together a few slides for you. Next slide. So first of all, a few things have occurred over the last few years. As I mentioned in my earlier remarks, the town is starting to modernize. One of the things we did was create a DPW. In creating the DPW, we brought together a number of departments, and we hired a Director of Public Works to oversee those. The idea is that ultimately, in the long run, this will cost us less, but in the short term, we may have some additional costs. For the 2024 budget, there are a few changes that were, versus the way it was presented in the Blue Book in 2023. First of all, Care of Trees Department 294 and the Engineer Department 411 were collapsed into the Highway Department budget. So what that did is it increased the salaries by two FTEs. Also, an additional increase is for three new hires, and let me explain those to you. The first hire is an office manager for $62,772. That office manager is a replacement of our current administrator, who is a part-time employee. Due to the tight labor market and uncertainty as to when our administrative assistant would leave, we funded both these positions in 2024. However, in 2025, there will only be one position, and so you will see a reduction of approximately $46,000 in that line item. Additionally, we hired a mechanic. We have an outsourced mechanic. The mechanic's expenses were in different budget line items. This person is very good. He's the reason that our trucks are maintained well, and we keep them for 30 or 40 years. We've brought him on full-time, and that is an additional $20,000 when you net the $50,000 that's in an expense line item. The third hire is a foreman for $76,000. This is a replacement of a foreman that was part of the Highway Department two years ago. However, we delayed hiring this individual until such time that we could ensure that we really needed the person. And we do need that individual. We have many more infrastructure programs in place that we need to manage. Just as a note, we went back historically to look at the number of FTEs in the Highway Department. In 1992, we had 11 FTEs. Today, we have six. So what we're asking for are enough individuals to help maintain our current infrastructure.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Is there any further discussion on this motion to amend? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to a vote on the motion to amend. And again, Mr. Long has requested that we reduce the amount of salary for item four-twenty-two for Highway Maintenance from $855,047 to $644,914. And again, the item that we're voting on, the motion to amend, is item four-twenty-two, which is on page thirty-five of your Blue Book. Okay? Any, any discussion about this? Any questions? Okay, when I give you the signal, you may, if you're in favor of the motion to amend, press one for yes. If you're opposed to the motion to amend, press two for no. Okay, the motion to amend does not pass. So we now return to the main motion, which was a motion to authorize me to read over the items for Article Four, beginning at page thirty-one of the Blue Book, as amended by the handout. I will now ask if there's any discussion with respect to that main motion. Again, if this motion passes, I will be authorized to read over the amounts that are in the Blue Book, and if nobody objects or says hold for an item, those items for which no objection or hold is expressed will be deemed to have been approved. So again, this is authorizing me to read over the items that are in the Blue Book and in the amended handout sheet for Article Four. Is there any discussion on this main motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of the main motion, please, please press one for yes, or if you're opposed, Okay, the main motion carries. So I will now be reading the items beginning on page thirty-one, and I'm going to be reading the totals for each line item. And remember that some of these line items are amended, and I will be referring to the handout where there has been a change for the item that's listed in the Blue Book. So the first item is 122 Selectmen, and again, that's on page thirty-one. And if you refer to the handout, you'll see that the requested amount for fiscal year twenty-four is $689,201. So the total amount for line item 122 is $689,201. Then moving to item 129, the total amount requested is $26,900. Item 131, Warrant Committee, amount requested, $9,200. Item 132, Reserve Fund, $250,000. Hold on Reserve Fund. Okay, thank you. Item 135, Town Accountant, total, now this is also changed in the handout, the amount in the handout for item 135, Town Accountant, is a total of $282,921. Item number 141 for Assessor, total, $212,050. Item number 145, Treasurer Collector, total, $312,708. 151, Law, total, $200,000. Was there a hold on that?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Item number 155, Data Processing, total, $302,043. Item 161, Town Clerk, total, $103,719. 162, Election Registration, total, $71,145. 171, Conservation Commission, total, $153,142. Planning Board, 175, total, $229,521. 176, Board of Appeals, total, $4,472. Okay, we're now moving to page thirty-three, item 178, zero. Item number 191, Whiting Road, $7,000. Item 192, Town House Expenses, $64,582. Item 193, Total, $86,784. Item 195, $6,125. Item 199, Total, $360,439. Item 201, Police, Total, now this was also changed, so if you refer to the handout, you'll see that the amount requested for fiscal year twenty-four, it results in a total Item 220, Fire, Total, $644,627. Item 231, Total, $358,638. 241, Total, $227,959. 291, Total, zero. 292, Total, $25,672. 294, Total, zero. 295, Total, zero. 299, $81,655. We're now moving to page thirty-five. 600, Total, $10,778,641. 601, Total, $12,954,938. 602, Total, $248,626. Item 411, Under Public Works and Facilities, zero. 6, 422, Highway Maintenance, Total, $1328,909. 423, Snow and Ice, again, refer to the handout, the new amount results in a total of $384,000. Okay, we now move to page thirty-six. Item 424, zero. Item 425, $72,000- Item 425, $72,916. Did I miss something?
424 is $8,800.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back to numbers. Thank you. Item 424, Street Lighting, $8,899. So we're now on page 36. Item 425, Town Garage, $72,916. Item 428, Pavement Patching, $280,000. Item 433, Zero. Okay, item 439, there is also a change on the handout to item 439. The total for item 439 is now $363,159. Item 450, Town Water, Total, $44,153.8. 491 Cemetery, Total, $131,158. I'm sorry, let me repeat that. Item 491 Cemetery, Total, $135,158. Item 519, we're now on page 37. Board of Health, Total, $281,569. 541, Council on Aging, again, there's a change, so if you refer to the handout, the total for the Council on Aging is now $254,150. Item 543, Veterans, Total, $2,000. Item 610, Culture and Recreation Library, Total, $894,358. Item 650, Parks and Rec, Total, $502,231. Item 691, $1,250. Now proceed to page 38. Item 692, Memorial Day, $3,500. Okay, now for Debt Service. Item 759, Bank Charges, Zero. Item 912, Workers' Compensation, Total, $118,543. Item 914, Group Insurance, $2,853,911.50. Item 916, this is also an item that's changed, so please refer to the handout. Item 916 for Medicare FICA, the amount requested for fiscal year 2024 is $192,000. 950, Other Insurance, $234,767.74. Okay, now to page 39. Pensions, Number 911, Total, $1,730,036. Okay, so the items for which there was not a hold are deemed to have been approved, and there was a hold for Item 132 Reserve Fund. Did anybody else hear any other holds? No other holds, okay. Number 132, with the person who requested additional information or would like to discuss 132, if you'd like to come up and ask your question.
Ms. Herman, can I just speak from here?
Sure, let me get you a microphone, Justine.
This is a question, this is a...
Justine, I'm sorry, Justine, your name and address.
Justine, I think you're in 2021.
Thank you.
And Ms. Herman, maybe I could ask you this, or Robin, this is a new account, and I just wanted to know if I could say this, but more importantly, I should have asked Ms. Herman this when you went through that excellent recap of different appropriations from free cash. And I actually read the entire Blue Book, and I'm wondering if I understood you correctly, that many items in Article 5 coming up, perhaps even this 250, would be applied for some of the extraordinary costs that I'm seeing in the budget. If you could just go over that, and in general, I would love to see the Warrant Committee hold more sessions explaining all this to the general public. I think, Robin, that's how you get people interested in government. Thank you.
Okay, who would like to answer that? Ms. Herman or Ms. Hunter? Ms. Herman?
Maybe I'll start on the Reserve Fund, and then, Robin, if you wouldn't mind, on the free cash and the cash reserves. So the Reserve Fund for $250,000 is something that we have as the Warrant Committee throughout the year in order to be able to receive requests for Reserve Fund for unanticipated expenses. And so, year-to-date, we've had eight different items come into us. Give you an example of what some of those might be. There was a cybersecurity attack that was obviously unplanned, and we had to do some remediation for that. Additional insurance on Carroll Community Center, as it's a vacant building. Another example was a garage door fix that also wasn't in the plan. And so these items, as they come up, the individuals do answer questions for us. We decide whether or not to approve these Reserve Fund transfers. So it's been $144,593.90 so far year-to-date. We still have $105,406.70 remaining, and so it's very unlikely at this point we spend the full $250,000, but it's really meant to be for the unanticipated items that happen within a given year. As far as the use of cash reserves, you're correct, it is going into multiple areas that we're hoping to fund tonight. This was in line with some of the policies that we've developed over the last few years. Robin, is there something you'd like to add for that?
So I just want to remind people that municipal accounting is cash-based, so you have to fund everything, and the only way we can use any cash reserves is with the authorization of town meeting. So the reason we ask for the $250,000 is contingencies for expenses in case they go over. So I hope I answered your question.
Okay, are there any other questions or any discussion with respect to Item Number 132 Reserve Fund? Okay, since there was a hold on this item, we're going to have to vote on this separately, so I'll ask a motion. Ms. Herman, could you make a motion with respect to this item?
Mr. Moderator, I move that $250,000 be raised and appropriated for Item 132 Reserve Fund.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Ms. Herman has made a motion with respect to Item 132 Reserve Fund, and there has been a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. When I give you the sign, if you're in favor of this motion to approve the expenditure, I'm sorry, the appropriation, please press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, please press 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, on to Article 5, which is on page 40 of the Blue Book. Okay, now Article 5 is actually going to involve three separate votes, three separate motions. And the reason for that is that two of the items that are in Article 5, one is an expenditure for a new fire engine, and the other is for a significant improvement of Claybrook Road, are going to require borrowing. And when something requires borrowing, it is a two-thirds vote, not a majority vote. So two of the items that we'll be considering later, after we consider the items that do not require a borrowing, will involve the fire engine and will also involve Claybrook Road renovation. The other items that are simply a majority vote are listed in the handout that you have the Revised Order for Article 5 Capital Budget. And the items that are listed are the items that we will be voting on in the first motion because they simply require a majority vote. Is everybody clear on how we're handling this? Okay. I have to admit, I was confused at first. Okay, so I will now ask Mr. Hudson to read the motion from the items that do not require a borrowing and which are in the handout. Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the capital budget items recommended by the Capital Budget Committee, as shown in the Warrant Committee Report in the Blue Book, except those revised by the handout provided to town meeting and entitled Revised Order of Article 5 Capital Budget, be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that to meet these appropriations, the town raise and appropriate the sum of $521,691, and transfer from free cash the sum of $423,000 for the following items. Fire Department Self-Contented Breathing Apparatus, $127,772. Fire Department Turnout Gear, $23,000. Fire Department Chest Compression Device, $27,760. Police Department Cruisers, $65,000. Highway Department Transfer Roll-On-Roll-Off Truck, $250,000. Cemetery John Deere Gator, $32,000. Selectmen Library HVAC, $50,000. Selectmen Library Roof, $95,000. Selectmen Townhouse Air Conditioning Unit, $55,000. Selectmen Highway Air Compressor, $10,000. Park and Recreation Small Tractor with Mower Deck and Snow Attachments, $34,159. Dover Schools School Flooring, $130,000. Dover Schools Fire Control Panel, $45,000.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Herman, for the second. So this motion, again, will ask me to call over the items that are listed in the handout for which there will be a majority vote. However, before I vote on them, or before I ask for a vote on the main motion, I believe that Parks and Recreation has an amendment that they would like to advance. Mr. Bowlin, could you come up here and read your amendment, and then, after there's a second, explain the rationale?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Name and address, Chris.
Chris Bowlin, Tower Drive. I, Chris Bowlin, of the Park and Recreation Commission, move that the main motion be amended to add a new item, 6B, Park and Recreation Large Tractor with Mower and Snow Attachments for the amount of $67,535, and that the amount of free cash necessary to fund Article 5 be increased for a total of $490,535.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlin. Do I hear a second? Okay, ma'am, could you identify yourself, please? Thank you very much, Karen. Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to amend the main motion. Mr. Bowlin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So first of all, just want to give some perspective, because I know someone was given at the beginning of the meeting. As you can see from this chart, we've been a fairly light touch at town meeting over the last couple of years, so I want that to be factored into your decision. Next slide, please. So this large tractor that we're asking for is our Swiss Army knife of our equipment. We use this for lots of different things, as you can see. It's mowing, it's snow removal, and that's really, that's part of the challenge here is that it gets double duty. Unlike the mower in your garage or the snow blower in your garage, it doesn't take a season off. You know, one of the things you'll read in the Blue Book is, from the Warrant Committee, is that, you know, their guideline is 10 years and 2,000 hours. As a finance person myself, I think that's the guideline, that's the ideal world, but we don't live in the ideal world, we live in New England. And so the reason we're asking for this is it has aged a little faster than we would have liked, both in hours and years. And so we're asking for your support. The Commission agreed to take this to town meeting because our Director, Mark Galone, felt that this needed to be brought forward. We trust Mark's judgment, and we ask all of you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlin. Any response to that? Barry, did you want to respond to that?
Cindy Dival is here.
Okay, sorry. There's a microphone over there, okay. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Dival. I live at 28 Francis Street, and I have been a member of the Capital Budget Committee since 2018. Whoever's in charge can... Great, okay. So I'm just going to quickly go through how we evaluated the request for this tractor, a little bit about our replacement guidelines, and then review the additional due diligence that we conducted when we found out that Park and Rec wanted to bring this amendment to town meeting. So back in January, Park and Rec came to us requesting the 1585 tractor with attachments, and when they did that, they also provide age and condition information to us. So as Chris said, it's a 2014 with about 1,400 hours and no rust and just routine maintenance anticipated for the next year. As you can see by the red Xs, that did not meet any of our replacement guidelines. We, you can go to the next slide. We established these guidelines in 2019 when Park and Rec originally requested the replacement of the 738 mower that was approved this year. And in order to establish the guidelines, first, I spoke with a John Deere salesman in South Shore tractor, and when I asked him generally about the equipment, and when we talk about this equipment replacement, we're talking about mowers, tractors, gators, just generally the John Deere stuff that you see around town. So I asked him about this equipment, what could we expect for useful life? And the salesman told me a minimum of 2,500 hours and at least 10 years. He said it's really well-built stuff, and it will last, even in the New England weather. So then I went and called a couple of neighboring towns to see how they handled the equipment replacement. Westwood said that it did not have any specific guidelines, but that it really didn't consider replacing equipment until it had met the manufacturer's useful life. Then I spoke with the Park and Rec Director of Medfield, and he said that they were pretty much told to run their equipment into the ground and that, to let him know if we were selling anything, because Dover gets rid of great stuff. So, next slide. Now, we understand that, you know, sometimes the equipment doesn't meet the replacement guidelines, and so we look at other considerations. So we look at the repair history. I asked a John Deere serviceman, I told him what we had spent on the repairs for the last couple of years, and he said that was well within what they would expect to be very typical. We also look at downtime, you know, is a piece of equipment being repaired so frequently that it's not allowing the department to do its work? And Park and Rec came to us and said, basically, up to a week of downtime during the off-season and two to three weeks during the rest of the year. So we thought that that was within reason. Finally, we look at the risk if this equipment were to fail altogether. And again, when Park and Rec met with us in January, they said that they have a 1575 tractor that while it's not a one-for-one, and it would impact the efficiency, that they could certainly use that as a backup, and the cemetery has a lawnmower that they could also use. So finally, we end up, because we don't want to miss anything, we don't want to have any rash judgments, we go and look at the equipment. Barry went to the Highway Garage, took these pictures, and you can see, well, you can see the new tires that they got recently, and generally, the equipment's in really good shape. So given that it did not meet the replacement guidelines, we don't seem to be at great risk for it being out of service, and it's in excellent condition. The Capital Budget Committee made the recommendation that we not replace the tractor at this So when we found out that there would be an amendment this evening, I made another call to a John Deere salesman. In fact, I used the salesman that had provided the quote for Park and Rec's replacement. And I asked him specifically, what do you expect... And I asked him specifically, what do you expect to get out of the 1585 tractor? And he said, that thing is a workhorse. It is meant to go hours and hours every day. You will get years and years and thousands of hours. And so I said, well, could you be a little more specific? And he said, you should easily get 6,000 to 8,000 hours out of that equipment. So I said, okay, well, full disclosure, we have a 2014 1585 with 1,400 hours. I told him what the repairs were, and I asked him what he thought, and he said, well, let me check with the service department, and I'll get back to you. So he did. And he said his service department told him that they would expect a 2014 to have at least 2,000 hours, and it would not be at all unusual to have three times that. So I asked him if there were supply chain issues, and he said, no, there is one part that they are waiting for from an external manufacturer, but when they get that, the market would be flooded with these tractors. Then I said to him, okay, well, we have a $67,000 proposal for a tractor with a bunch of attachments. And he said, well, our attachments are being built to fit on the model years across the board. So if you bought things in 2014 and they're still in good condition, you don't need to replace those, they'll fit on a 2024, 2025 model. He said that typically, they're not used nearly as much as the rest of the equipment.
Thirty seconds, Ms. DeValle.
Okay, thank you. So at the end of the day, I said, you know, given everything I've told you, what are your thoughts? And he said, well, my job is to sell, but even I think this could be deferred. So I went back to the Capitol Budget Committee, and they said that we agreed that we would stand by our initial recommendation to not replace the tractor until it is closer to the replacement guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeValle. Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, no further questions or discussions. We'll move to a vote, and again, this is a vote that's asking us to amend the main motion to add an additional expenditure for a tractor of $67,535. When I give you the signal, if you're in favor of the motion to amend, please press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, please press 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, the motion does not pass. So now we return to the main motion, and again, the main motion, if you look at the handout, is asking me to read over the items that are listed in the first category for which there'll be a majority vote. So is there any discussion over the motion that will ask me to call over these items? Hearing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please press 1 for yes. Opposed, 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, so I am now going to call over the items that are listed in the handout under category entitled "First," and as I call them out, I'll refer to the specific page number for each. The first item is for a fire ambulance, a self-contained breathing apparatus on page 41 of the Blue Book. Did I hear a hold on that? No? Okay. Second item is 1C, fire ambulance turnout gear, jackets, pants, hoods, and gloves. It's also on page 41 of the Blue Book. Turning to page 42, we have 1D, chest compression device. Also on page 42, item 2A, police cruiser. On page 43, item 3A, transfer station roll-on, roll-off truck on page 43. On page 44, item 4A, cemetery John Deere gator, page 44. Item 5A from the library HVAC, and that's at pages 44 to 45. So again, 5A, library HVAC. On pages 45 to 46, item 5B, library roof. On page 46, item 5C, townhouse air conditioning unit. On pages 46 to 47, item 5D, highway air compressor. On page 47, item 5A, Park and Rec small tractor with mower deck and snow attachments. Item 6A from the Chikering School flooring on page 48. And item 6B, also on page 48, for the Chikering School fire control panel. Okay, I did not hear any holds. Did anybody else hear any holds on any of these? Okay, all of these items are deemed to be approved. We now move to the second item that's referred to in the handout, the replacement of a fire engine 1 rescue pumper. And that's referred to or is discussed on page 40 of the Blue Book under item 1A. So if you turn to page 40 of the Blue Book, you'll see a description of the fire engine 1 rescue pumper. And I will now ask for a motion with respect to item 1A. Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate a sum of $990,000 for the purpose of replacing Engine 1 Rescue Pumper, item 2C, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $990,000 under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended.
Cam, did you say item 1A or 2? It should be item 1A.
Oh, shoot. Sorry.
That's okay. Do you mind just repeating the motion again?
Yeah, one second.
So it's 1A, item 1A, Cam.
I don't have 1A.
In the Blue Book, it's item 1A.
Do you have a 1A?
There was a typo in the motion, apparently.
I don't have a 1A. Jim, I'm sorry.
If you look in the Blue Book...
Where is it? Do you know?
It's on page 40 of the Blue Book. I'm sorry. It's on page 40 of the Blue Book, Cam.
Okay. So where's the motion?
The very first item.
Should I just read the whole thing out?
Just start this with 1A. No, it's just the number of the article.
Okay.
So where do I do it?
Next page.
I'm completely confused.
And then just say 1A.
Uh huh. I didn't say 1A anyway.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, 1A, I move that the town appropriate a sum of $990,000 for the purpose of replacing Engine 1 Rescue Pumper, item 2C.
No, sir, item 1A.
Oh, item 1A, sorry. Including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $900,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, $990,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Herman. The reason that I was so picky about this is that the Department of Revenue reviews these, and as does the AG's office, so I wanted to make sure that when they look at it, we don't have any questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson, for your patience with me. Much appreciated. Okay, so we have a motion to consider item 1A, the new fire engine at a cost of $990,000. This is going to require borrowing, so it's going to be a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion with respect to the new fire engine?
There's a presentation.
I'm sorry?
There's a presentation.
Wasn't there going to be a presentation on this? Barry, do you want to do it? I thought the fire department was going to... Okay. I think you can be very brief on this, Barry.
Good evening. I'm Barry Goldman, and I'm here to introduce the chief, who will make a comprehensive presentation this evening. The Capitol Budget Committee met with the fire department and the Board of Fire Engineers on numerous occasions from October through April to study and review their capital assets, which includes fire trucks, gear, and equipment. This was necessary for the committee to understand the specialized use of each of the trucks and their specific applications to the type of fire or emergency. Engine 1 is the rescue pumper, which has a multiplicity of primary roles: motor vehicle accidents, wires down, auto supply pumper, medical rescues, and other rescues of all Slide number one shows how we look for significant compelling facts and circumstances to establish the need for replacement. This equipment is 34 years old and in service since 1989. It responded to 54 calls in 2022, and it was out of service for six weeks. We have spent over $18,000 in maintenance over the last four years. Safety concerns include it is one of only two open cabs still operating in Massachusetts. It does not have the safety features that newer trucks have on the road, and the chief will explain those kinds of safety factors. The life expectancy of fire trucks is 15 years, as established by the National Fire Protection Association, so the truck has served us well. The cost to refurbish this truck is estimated to be $699,000. Slide number 2 highlights some of the features of the new truck. It has an enclosed cab, which will provide safety features for our first responders. It has integrated compressed air foam system with internal tanks, and includes a hydraulic-generated rescue tools. To reduce the impact on our budget, we are seeking grants from both federal and state sources, and tonight, I'd like to announce an allocation in the state budget from Representative Garlock, our friend, in the amount of $75,000, subject to the governor's signature. We've been able to do this before for the fire department. Ms. Garlock participated several years ago in a grant of $135,000 for the ambulance. We are recommending the adoption of this article, and now I'd like to introduce Paul Lutazi, Chief of the Fire Department. Go ahead.
Thank you, Barry. I need, I say more, you did a great job. A little background on our department. We are 100% paid on-call department for volunteer service, which means when the service is needed, we respond from home or work, and then to the call. All members either live in Dover or work in Dover. Thirty of our 35 members are Dover residents. We are here to ask, town meeting, all of you, to approve the replacement of our 1989 Engine 1 Rescue Pumper. Engine 1 is 34 years old, does not meet current NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, standards, DOT standards, and has a number of major safety issues. Next slide. As you can see from the slide, the open riding area is of great concern to us. Firefighters ride outside when responding to calls. The hazards are apparent. Firefighters can leave the cab area, or equipment could enter it in the event of a crash. In harsh weather, members are exposed to the wind, rain, lightning, extreme temperatures in the winter. Open cabs were started to be replaced in the late 80s, and most new fire engines were delivered without enclosed cabs. No town around us operates apparatus with open cabs. Engine 1 is 34 years old, built in the late 80s, to the standards of the late 80s. I do not believe that any of you would like to respond to a fire call in a vehicle that has an open cab or one that is over three decades old, and I would like my personnel to respond in a modern, safe vehicle. This is a picture of the open cab where firefighters sit while responding. Has only waist seat belts, no shoulder straps. The air packs that are in the truck there do not have locks, and a lot of equipment sitting above the riders, above the rider in the pumping housing. Open cabs are not safe. That is why the open cab console is not in operation and does not meet NFPA or DOT standards. Next slide. Some of the additional deficiencies of Engine 1 are scene steps and ground lighting. All walking or stepping surfaces need to be lit. Inadequate compartment space. We do not have enough space to carry the equipment so that it can be easily retrieved. Inadequate cab door openings. The steps into and out of the cabs are eight and a half inches wide compared to the 24 inches they should be. Unsafe stepping surfaces. All stepping areas need to have a textured surface to reduce the chance of slip and falls. It's not designed as a first-in engine. Lack of firefighting hose and the pump capacity. Building a new fire rescue pumper to operate as a first-in fire engine to respond to structured fires. There are no AC 110 powers to the compartments. No place to plug in battery-powered rescue tools. No dedicated medical compartments. Currently, medical equipment is packed into a compartment with other equipment, making it difficult to access. The new engine shall have dedicated EMS compartment, allowing for medical equipment to be readily available. The additional compartments shall allow for more medical equipment to be carried. Lack of replacement parts, as Barry said, this is a major concern. The lack of availability of parts has in shell in the future generate prolonged out-of-service times. Next slide. If approved tonight, a number of safety issues shall be fixed and improvements to everyday operation of the department. You'll have seatbelt warning system, frontside airbags, rollover protection, third-party cab crash testing, seatbelt anchor testing, heated cab and AC cab, medical compartment, which will be heated as well, enclosed crew cab riding area, large pump capacity, more firefighting hose, compressed air system, full-depth compartment, roll-up compartment doors so you don't open them on the side of the road and have to walk out around them. Wow, okay. As you can see, next slide.
Thirty seconds.
Why are we here? Replacing Engine 1. Safety for the firefighters. The current engine has safely issued concerns and have to be addressed. Safety for the residents of Dover and their property. The new rescue engine pumper shall increase performance, meet new rules, and allow for the enhanced response for emergency situations. Lack of replacement parts and water supply. Dover does not have townwide water system, so it's essential for the vehicles of the department to have adequate water carrying capabilities in order to protect Dover residents and their property. Thank you very much, and I hope you vote yes on our request.
Thank you, Mr. Lutazi. Is there any further discussion with respect to... I guess not. Okay. Any further discussion with respect to the main motion? Okay, so this is a two-thirds vote. So all those that are in favor of borrowing $990,000 under Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended, to purchase a new fire engine, you'll be pressing 1 for yes and 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries by more than two-thirds. Okay, now for the third motion. Number 3 on your handout relates to the renovation of Claybrook Road. Number three on your handout relates to the renovation of Claybrook Road. Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate a sum of $1,500,000 for the Claybrook Brook Road construction restabilization, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,500,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Herman, for seconding. I would now like to turn to Ms. Hunter, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to discuss this motion.
Good evening once again. I am going to be very brief here. I am also a member of the Capitol Budgets, and today we're just going to present to all of you the condition of Claybrook Road. So if you go to Slide 2, there is a picture of the condition of Claybrook Road, and you can see that it basically has collapsed, and right now we have current one-way traffic going along Claybrook Road. Slide number three is why should we repair this now? Well, it's really risk mitigation. You can get from one side to the other with this one-way traffic pattern right now. However, as the weather continues, the road is going to further deteriorate, and we're going to see further deterioration of the road. It could potentially be a public safety issue then. We also may have to close the road completely, or that section of the road, and have citizens access from one side to get to their homes, and then from the other side on Claybrook Road. There will be two dwellings whose driveways are impacted. On Slide number four is the proposed work. It's basically going to reinforce 400 feet of roadway, and we'll put steel-supporting brims underneath it. It will permanently restore the roadway. We also have to reinforce the riverbed. On Slide number five, our timelines are as follows. We would need to go to public bid on May 25. We would then anticipate awarding the contract on July 7, and we expect the work to take 16 weeks. As you can imagine, we really need to do this during the summer months. On Slide number six, you will see the project costs. The total cost provided by an engineer is $1.9 million. We are asking for $1.5 million because we are using $250,000 that was awarded already at a prior town meeting. We also have $229,000 from a Mass. DOT grant and another $178,000. In the meantime, we are also trying to obtain grants from Mass. Works. There are grants of approximately $1 million that we may be able to obtain to repair this. However, we need your approval tonight so that we can begin repairs. If we wait to get an answer on these grants, we will not be able to start the repair, and we really may run the risk of having to close the road. But we have no control over the weather. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any further discussion? Okay, we can move to a vote on the motion to authorize a borrowing of $1.5 million under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended. If you are in favor of this motion, you will be pressing one for yes. If you're opposed, please press two for no. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. Okay, on to Article Six, which is on page 49 of the Blue Book. Ms. Kenny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash a sum of $647,400 for the town of Dover's share of replacing HVAC units pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement between the district and the towns of.
Towns of Dover and Sherburne.
Of Dover and Sherburne. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. McCormick has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. We can move to a vote. This is a majority vote. If you are in favor, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. Motion carries. Okay, we are now moving to a section of the meeting where we're going to bundle some articles together. The first group of articles that we're going to bundle together for a vote are Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, which are on pages 50 and 51 of your Blue Book. These articles involve very small amounts of expenditures and have routinely been approved at every town meeting as far back as anyone can remember. So in order to save time, we thought that we would consider them all together in a type of vote that's called a consent vote. Ms. McCormick, could you make the motion, please?
Sure, Mr. Moderator.
Janet, you're going to have to get closer to the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, be approved in the amounts and appropriated from the sources of funds as listed in the warrant committee report in the Blue Book.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny has seconded. So this asks me to call over the items for Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, which again are at pages 50 to 51 of the Blue Book. So now you're voting to allow me to do that. If somebody has an objection or a question with respect to any of these items, again Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, or Eleven, please say hold as I'm calling over, for right now you're going to be authorizing me to call over the items. All those in favor of calling over? I'm sorry, I was about to ask for a verbal vote. If you're in favor of this motion, please press one for yes. If you're opposed, please press two for no. Okay, the motion carries. So I am now going to call over the items. The first item is Article Eight on page 50, and it asks us to appropriate $10,000 for unemployment compensation fund. The next item is also on page 50, Article Nine, which asks us to appropriate $10,000 for sick leave for retiring police officers. The next item is Article Ten, pages 50 to 51, that asks us to appropriate funds for road construction, reconstruction, and improvement as funded by various state budgets. And lastly, Article Eleven, which is on page 53, asks that we appropriate $10,000 to the conservation fund. Are there any holds or questions with respect to these four items? I'm sorry?
Conservation is $25,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let me. Thank you for correcting that. For Article Eleven, page 53, let me just confirm that. Okay, thank you. Article Eleven, page 53, that's $25,000. Are there any holds on this or any questions? Okay, then these items are deemed to have been approved, so we can now skip over to the next consent item, which involves Articles Seven, Sixteen, and Seventeen. And these articles, which are on? Article Seven is on page 50, Article Sixteen is on page 53, and Article Seventeen is on page 53, and the sponsors of all three of these articles have asked that they be dismissed. So I will now ask Mr. Chen to make a motion with respect to these Articles Seven, Sixteen, and Seventeen.
Ms. Moderator, I move that Articles Seven, Sixteen, and Seventeen be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that the town dismiss them.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. So the vote is asking me to call over the items, that Articles Seven, page 50, Articles Sixteen, page 53, and Articles Seventeen, page 53. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of this motion, you'll press one for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press two for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries. So we can now skip ahead to Article Twelve, which is on page 51, and that is the appropriation of funds for the General Stabilization Fund. Again, it's Article Twelve, page 51. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $170,300 to this General Stabilization Fund authorized by Chapter Forty, Section 5B of Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McGowsky, for the second. So this is asking that we appropriate funds from free cash for the amount of $170,300 to the General Stabilization Fund. This is a majority vote. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please press one for yes. Opposed, please press two for no. Motion carries. Article Thirteen, which is at pages 51 to 52 of the Blue Book, relates to the appropriation of funds for the Dover Sherburne Regional School District OPEB Stabilization Fund. Mr. Chen.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $721,000 to the Dover Sherburne Regional School District OPEB Stabilization Fund as authorized by Chapter Forty, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Any discussion on this matter? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of this, press one for yes. Two for no. Motion carries. On to Article Fourteen at pages 51 to 52 of the Blue Book. This refers to the appropriation of funds for one-time projects. Mr. McGowsky.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $125,000 for communication studies services and website upgrade under the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. McGowsky. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny, for the second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. This is a majority vote. If you are in favor, you'll press one. If you're opposed, press two. Motion carries. Article Fifteen, which is on page 53 of the Blue Book, requests an appropriation of funds for unpaid bills. This requires a four-fifths vote, is an 80% vote. Mr. Hudson.
I move that the sum of $7,594.92 be transferred from free cash for the purpose of paying the following unpaid bills. From the accounting department, W.B. Mason, for $39. For Town Buildings, Brad Crosby, for $86.58. From Town Buildings, Atlas Services, $1,872. For Highway, Sin Oil, $3,117.34. And from the deputy tax collector, John Y. Brady, $2,480.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for seconding. This is a four-fifths vote. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, press one for yes. Opposed, press two for no. Motion carries. Okay, Articles? Motion carries by more than 80%. We now can move to Article Eighteen because we acted on the intervening articles already in our consent vote. So if you move to page 54 of the Blue Book, we are now going to deal with amending zoning bylaws, and the first item will be the floodplain district sponsored by the Planning Board. Ms. McCormick.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section 185-44 entitled Floodplain District in its entirety and replacing it with the new Section 185-44 entitled Floodplain District, the complete text of which is on file in the offices of the town clerk and the planning board.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder, for the second. Now, this is one of two articles that's being proposed or sponsored by the Planning Board. They have eight minutes per article, so they have a total of 16 minutes that they can devote to a discussion of these two articles, and they're going to allocate their time between the two based on what they think is appropriate. So first, with respect to this article involving the amendment of the zoning bylaws relating to the floodplain district, I'd like to call upon Scott Friedman. And Mr. Friedman, name and address, please.
Scott Friedman, 41 Breton Road.
Okay, you're going to have to really move close to that mic, Scott. It's not very sensitive.
Scott Friedman, 41 Breton Road. Next slide, please. Okay, so the National Flood Insurance Program is managed by FEMA, and it enables homeowners, business owners, and renters in participating communities to purchase federally backed flood insurance. This offers an alternative to disaster assistance, which may not be available from other sources, and participating communities agree to adopt and enforce floodplain management ordinances to reduce future flood damage. This is available to residents and business owners in high-risk as well as moderate to low-risk areas. An estimated 40 local buildings are located in our floodplain district and require flood insurance. Property owners of these buildings have been notified and received a copy of this new bylaw. Next slide, please. So the flood insurance rate maps are official maps of a community that displays the floodplains, special hazard areas, and risk premium zones. They're updated every five to 10 years. The last update was in July of 2012, and the current effective maps are from July 2021. New maps are expected by December and will be ready for us to adopt in 2024. No changes to any maps are included in this proposed bylaw. Next slide, please. So the summary of these updates are to update the section to align with the new state model bylaw and remain in compliance with FEMA's flood insurance program. This includes new requirements, definitions, and clarifications on work limitations within flood zones, and we've got more detail on the next slide. And this bylaw has been reviewed by the state's flood insurance program coordinator as well as town council. So the notable updates are the designation of a community floodplain administrator, which will be our building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, permitting requirements for the development within the floodplain district, requirements for recreational vehicles, requirement for Dover to submit new data to FEMA when available to be incorporated into future maps, and standards for variances. And the voting implications are if this passes by a two-thirds majority, Dover and its residents are able to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. If it fails to pass, we may be deemed ineligible and removed from the program, which would adversely affect the owners of the estimated 40 local buildings which require the flood insurance. That's all.
Okay.
And I'm supposed to mention that at the public hearing on April 3, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting approve Article Eighteen, as I just outlined.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Is there any further discussion on this motion? This is a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please press one for yes. Opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. Okay, now, onto Article 19, which is at pages 54 to 55 of your Blue Book. This also involves an amendment to the zoning bylaws for accessory dwelling units. This is a majority vote. No, it's a majority, yeah. It is a majority vote. And again, at pages 54 to 55 of the Blue Book. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 185-5, 185-10, and 185-43, as set forth in the warrant, in accordance with the text of each change and file with the offices of the town clerk and the planning boards.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jody Hsu, would you like to present the Planning Board's position on this, please? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jody Hsu, the vice chair of the Planning Board. I live at 10 Main Street. And on behalf of the Planning Board, I'm pleased to present Article 19, which is an update to the existing accessory apartment bylaw that's already on the books in the town code. We've been... We've dug deeply into this issue over the past couple of years and hope you will agree that if passed, it will provide Dover residents with an enhanced tool in the property owner's toolkit. So just to level set, as I mentioned, Dover already allows for what we call accessory apartments in some circumstances. Section 18543 of the bylaw, which was approved at town meeting in May of 1986, permits accessory apartments under certain circumstances and in certain districts. Oversight of that process is through the Zoning Board of Appeals and the special permit process. Notably, the existing bylaw limits accessory apartments to houses that were legally occupied on or before January 1, 1985. And the bylaw also caps the total number of accessory apartments that are... The opportunity to 10% of the total housing stock in Dover. And this was a good start back in 1986. Dover was somewhat of an outlier at the time or an early adopter. Now there are over 140 towns in the state that allow accessory units in some form. So we're no longer standing alone or at the forefront. And so you might ask, why update the existing bylaw now? And for the most part, the Planning Board's position here comes from very significant resident input on the availability or limits on a range of housing options in town. So we work really hard to be responsive to that feedback. And we know that in a town as expensive as ours, obviously is, it's vital that we tap into the flexibility that accessory dwelling units, as we'll call them, and I'll get into that in a minute, offer to a range of people. People like older adults who want to stay in the community and would benefit from the rental income that an accessory unit could provide or a family member sharing costs. Families with caregivers who have needs for young children, disabled family members or otherwise, young adults moving back home, or families who want or need to welcome elderly parents, which is a scenario that we were all aware of during the recent pandemic. Next plot side, please. The goals of this bylaw update are quite specific. And here they are. Number one, to build upon Dover's existing framework for accessory apartments, to create flexible housing options for more residents and families, not just those who happen to live in homes that were constructed before 1985 or January 1, 1985. To streamline the approvals process, and notably to safeguard the residential character that we all really love about Dover, and to create this flexibility while limiting impacts on our town infrastructure. You know, housing needs continue to evolve, as we all know, and our bylaw can adapt and evolve in response to those changing needs. Next slide, please. So to bring us all on the same page, an accessory dwelling unit, or an ADU, is a residential living unit that is subordinate to the principal residence on a single-family lot. It's defined as a self-contained accessory unit that has its own sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. It also has its own entrance and is always considered subordinate to the primary dwelling. So just to be very clear, they could never be separated out. It's a single-family lot with a primary residence and a subordinate unit. An accessory dwelling unit can be attached to or detached from the primary residence. So you may find them in converted interior spaces like basements or attics or even part of main living floors. Or you can find them in converted garages or detached buildings, things like barns or carriage houses or detached garages here in Dover. As I said, they can also be attached to the primary home. Next slide. The idea probably feels familiar to many of you. They've also been known to be called in-law apartments or granny flats. They're gaining popularity throughout the Commonwealth and certainly beyond. As I mentioned, well over 100 communities in Massachusetts now allow ADUs in some format. So we know that Dover already has this zoning framework, as I mentioned. It limits availability of this option to homeowners who own properties that were occupied before 1985. It caps the total number. And in all cases, anybody interested in trying to apply for a permit for an accessory dwelling unit, or as we call them today, accessory apartments, needs to get a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So as I said, it's a good start, but we think we can continue to evolve it. So if we look at, next slide, mapping the goals that I outlined a few slides ago with what we're trying to do with the existing bylaw, I just want to walk you through the key aspects of the update and show you how they map to those goals. So the first one has to do with building upon our existing framework. So the existing bylaw, as I've mentioned many times, doesn't make ADUs an option for you if you're a homeowner in a home that was not occupied before January 1, 1985. If this bylaw update passes, it will be an option for you to consider. We also have a limitation on the total number of ADUs allowed in town, which is the 10% cap, interestingly, at least interesting to me because I didn't know this before I started working on this. We don't actually keep track of that. And so that's something that we'll probably do a better job of if this passes, but it's not tracked in any office that we were able to find. So we don't believe that having the limitation serves us as a town. And so if passed, this limitation would be lifted. When it comes to streamlining the approvals process, right now, everybody who applies for a permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit or an accessory apartment, as it's called in the existing bylaw, goes through the site plan review process at the Planning Board. And this bylaw doesn't change that. So when we think about how do we be certain that we can maintain and safeguard the residential character of town, the Planning Board will be reviewing every single application that comes through the Building Department. And I think that's really important because it's a safeguard that we can all count on. However, we also know that there are cases where we want even more oversight. We want to make sure that we're... Have multiple eyes on things and that we are really careful about how this rolls out. So the special permit requirement would be required only in cases...
30 seconds.
Thank you, of the detached ADUs. So like a carriage house or a garage apartment. We're really good at this. Next one. You can see some other safeguards that we've outlined. Residential districts, that doesn't change. Site plan review in all cases, special permit only for detached. The size limitation doesn't change. Owner occupancy is really important. It's not specifically addressed in the existing bylaw, but we're writing that into the new one. Owners would be required to either occupy the main residence, the primary residence, or the ADU. And also, short-term rentals would specifically be prohibited. We think those are really important safeguards because we've heard a lot of concerns about, you know, Airbnbs and things of the like. So we hope you will agree that this is a good improvement to the bylaw and that you'll support it with your vote. Next slide, just really important for you to know. Oh, oh, yeah, this is really important, sorry. Dover's zoning bylaw applies to every construction project in town. So when you apply for an ADU, lot coverage, septic, board of health requirements, they all continue to apply. This is not a workaround. So it's really important that you're aware of that.
Jody, wrap it up now, you're out of time.
Yeah, okay. So voting implication, this is a 50% plus one vote. If it... If it passes by a simple majority here tonight, then the updated accessory dwelling unit bylaw will replace the existing. If it fails to pass, we still allow accessory dwelling units in town, but the existing bylaw will stay on the books. And accessory dwelling units will only be eligible for homeowners with houses built before 1985. So thank you for your support and thank you for considering.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come up to the microphone or would you like somebody to bring in a microphone? Okay. Either one of those... Either one of those three microphones, if you have a question.
I'm definitely yes, but I had a comment about 900 square feet maximum space on 53 Pavissette Street. On my... On my land, I have an old historic house that is one of the first houses, solar houses in the U.S. that is falling apart. I don't think it's 900 square feet, so... But I would like to restore it to its original glory. So my... I would like to suggest amending 900 square feet, to say 900 square feet or within the footage of the existing premises. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, are you making an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, could you repeat the square footage again?
So the maximum size of 900 square feet or within the existing footage of the premises that exist.
Could you come up here and write this out for our town council, please? There's stairs right here, ma'am. Right over here. Right here, right here.
Are you asking for more or less?
So she's saying if there's a pre-existing structure and it's more than 900 square feet, she'd like it... Right. That should be allowed.
I think it's outside... I'm sorry, I think it's outside the scope. The warrant... I don't think it's within the scope of the notice provided by the warrant article.
That it would be of...
Right, right. No, so I think what... I think what you need to do is work with...
Yeah, you might be able to change the design.
They can come back to you.
It could be. I mean, she has an existing structure. It's a very cool house. Right, and go to the planning.
Yeah, I can work with the planning. Okay, can we sit down? Okay. Okay, so there is a motion that was made to amend the main motion. And the... I have ruled it to be out of the scope of notice that's contained in the warrant article. And I have advised the petitioner that she should talk to the Planning Board and also the Zoning Board of Appeals. And if that is not satisfactory, then we can reconsider it next year when there is adequate notice in the warrant that we're considering expanding the scope of the article. So we will move back to the main motion. And is there any further discussion on the main motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Crowley. No, special legislation dealing with dwelling units, accessory dwelling units has reduced it to a majority vote, Tom. It is, but special legislation now was adopted, how many years ago? I'm sorry?
2021.
It was adopted in 2021, Tom, that allows accessory dwelling units to be a majority vote, not a two-thirds vote. And Tom, if it makes you feel better, that was my first question, too. Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this article? Okay, ma'am, could you come up here to the... Oh, here's a microphone. And state your name and address, please. You're gonna have to speak more loudly, please.
I live at 10 Hill Street, and I'm Mrs. Christopher. And I just was wondering why there's no special permit required if it's attached. I'm just curious.
All right, Jody, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone, please.
No, it's a good question. It has to do with the Housing Choice Act, which the moderator just mentioned. And the Commonwealth, the law that was passed allows communities to pass zoning bylaw changes that relate to accessory dwelling units with a simple majority if they meet certain requirements. One of them is the square foot requirement, 900 square feet. And the other is that attached ADUs be allowed by right, which means no need for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is why. And so then it gives towns the flexibility to determine if they also want to allow detached ADUs by right or if they want to add that extra layer of a special permit with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is the route that we're taking. And also, it's worth noting that we have reviewed this extensively with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they have no issue on policy with this strategy as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, ma'am? Now, okay, any further discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. And again, this is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the motion to amend the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, you will press one for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, next to Article 20 at pages 55 to 56 of the Blue Book, which addresses amendment to the wetlands protection bylaw. Ms. Kenny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the Dover general bylaws, Chapter 181 Dover Wetlands Protection, Section 181-6, entitled Notices and Hearings, Fees and Expenses, by deleting Section B in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Section B, the commission shall hold a public hearing on an application within 21 days of its receipt. Notice of the time and place of the hearing shall be given by the commission at the expense of the applicant, not less than five days prior to the hearing, by publication in a newspaper of general circulation in Dover, and by mailing in accordance with WPA 3... newspaper of general circulation in Dover and by mailing in accordance with WPA 310 CMR 10-05, semicolon parentheses 3B1, a notice to the applicant, owner, Board of Health, Planning Board, and by email to such other persons as the commission may determine per rules and regulations for the Dover Wetlands Protection Bylaw. And by deleting the first sentence of Section E in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Section E, in addition, the applicant shall pay the fee and expenses of any outside peer review consultants deemed necessary by the commission, in accordance with the commission's rules and regulations and Massachusetts general law. Chapter 44, Section 53G. At the discretion of the commission, no permit shall be issued until such fees and expenses have been paid.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Magowski. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to present this article, please?
Good evening. I'm John Sullivan, 35 Walpole Street, current chair of the Conservation Commission. These are simpler than almost anything before us this evening. They're administrative, pretty perfunctory. The first one allows us to use email, bring us into the 21st century. I thought it was a good idea. And so it just, it limits the, who requires bulky paper packages to Planning Board and Board of Health and the rest, everything we receive currently for anything to conservation is done via PDF documents, so then we can email those out. So that's, that's basically all that is changing. And then the second one, to our surprise, because we haven't utilized it, we, appears to have been on the books for more than 30 years, which is that it, when somebody comes to conservation with a complex filing, usually developers, 40B subdivision, things of that nature, somewhere in the 20th century, they put in a limit of $5,000 for the commission to have outside review, outside experts and consultants review their application so that we knew that, that things were appropriately done and that there would be appropriate protections for the wetlands that we oversee. And we never bumped into that until most recently. And it makes sense, when somebody comes to us with a 40B, we didn't see any reason for residents of Dover to have to pay for outside expert review for a profit-making venture. So what we're asking you to do, and also, we're the only board that had this limit. So none of the other boards have a $5,000 peer review limit. So we're asking you to relieve us from that limitation and have that be on the applicant. We don't anticipate this being an individual property owner, you know, with an existing house.
Mr. Sullivan, you have to speak up a little bit.
I'm sorry. We don't, we don't anticipate this to be an issue that would happen with an existing property owner. This is really for new development. And what we're finding is that all the, in essence, all the good lots have been taken. So the people who are coming in front of us now are building in lots that were once considered marginal. And that's the ones who come in front of us. If somebody found a lot that didn't have wetlands involved, then, then they, they don't come in front of us. But if they come in front of us with a lot that was previously undevelopable, then generally it's going to need a little bit more review. And we don't feel like we should be hamstrung by this, this limitation. So that's what we're asking for. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing now, let's move to a vote. This is, oh, wait, somebody has their hand up. Yes, sir. Can we have a microphone come over to him, please?
My name is Mike Savage. I'm at 14 Circle Drive. Just for the record, I have no business in front of Conservation Committee and don't fancy to pursue the future. However, I have a problem with this, the second part of this amendment. The issues I have will have to do with transparency, bad incentives, and bad precedents. And I'll go through them quickly. By the way, I have listened to participating to a couple of these meetings and I think volunteers on the Conservation Committee do a fabulous job. Volunteers like Mr. Sullivan should be commended. However, in terms of transparency, we should remember that most of the people that come before the Conservation Committee are residents. And it's a nice idea, many have already come, having paid for their own environmental engineer or consultant. And what they're proposing here is to take an unknown amount, a blood check, if you will, to hire external consultant hired by the Conservation Committee and turn unlimited amount of money to the applicant. I do like the idea of applicants bearing some of the suspense. I would call rapidly the amounts, it goes from $5,000 to $10,000, or even $15,000. But I think an unlimited amount is an unreasonable request. Bad incentives, the Conservation Committee will hire this outside consultant and time again, you have gendered bodies, hiring outside consultants with blank checks, it often leads to some kind of misuse. Mr. Sullivan makes a very good point about developers, but this amendment is not limited to developers. It's too tall. Bad precedents, thank you. There's no reason why any of the other boards might not institute this going forward. And I took a quick view of the bylaws and the only other instance where applicants have to pay for an external consultant chosen by the board is when someone applies for a cell phone call. I hate to see this process work its way through the rest of the committee. I suggest that you actually consider not approving this second part of the amendment.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan? Yes, would you like to respond? Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate your pat on the back as well as your concerns. The, historically, as I mentioned, if we look back 30 years, the only time we bumped into this has been for commercial development. We are residents, we have seven board members. We are cheap. I'm not in front of you asking for money. And we really take it personally. We view it as a customer service component, which is, we're you. So we're not looking to hire somebody and give them carte blanche for review. The only time we're looking at review, and we have people who have been on, we have one member who's been on the board for 30 years, I've been on it for 16, we have PhD botanists, we have MBAs, I'm a developer, we have quite a range of folks there. And the, so that if we need, if we feel the need with all that experience to have an outside consultant review something, it's, it's pretty rigorous. It means that this is not somebody adding a deck onto their house. But the biggest thing I can say is that we're homeowners and we're residents and we, we're not thinking, we have never given carte blanche to any of the consultants that we've had. We get quotes ahead of time, we work with a number of consultants who we find are very good and very reasonable. As regarding other boards, other boards don't even address that. So historically, they have, somebody comes in with the planning board, then the planning board uses a outside consultant.
30 seconds, Mr. Sullivan.
Or if they have, as they're moving towards a, as they try to find a full-time planning director, they'll use somebody like that, but still have the option to use outside consultants. So just to put you at ease, we have not encountered that. And even with 40Bs, what we've encountered is really a maximum of around $15,000. This, this would take a substantial subdivision to, to really invoke this.
Time, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's move, oh. Mr. Gernert, name and address for it.
No, actually, no. So this...
Alfred, please direct your comments to me, the moderator. Mr. Gernert, Mr. Gernert, I just asked town council, could you pass the microphone to the town council, please?
I'll try to be loud. So the statutory authority that allows the Conservation Commission to charge the consultant's fees to applicants doesn't allow it to charge any outside legal fees or any other fees. It is specifically for the consultants to render the scientific advice needed for the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gernert. You all set? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan. I'm sorry? Okay, why don't you speak into the microphone then?
Mr. Gernert, peer review is outlined in the, in the measure there, which is peer review of the wetlands experts. So it's really just peer-on-peer review of things. So it doesn't, it doesn't go off the rails there.
Okay. Any, any further questions or discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote on this motion. If you're in favor of the motion, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. This is a majority vote. You may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, Article 21, which is on pages 56 to 57, appointment of gas plumbing inspector and wiring inspector. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town move to amend the town's general bylaw, Article 34, Section 4-44, entitled Gas and Plumbing Inspector, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the following. There shall be a gas plumbing inspector and a wiring inspector appointed annually by the building inspector. The gas plumbing inspector's duties and authority shall include but shall not be limited to those specified in 248 CMR. And the wiring inspector's duties and authority shall include but not be limited to those specified in Massachusetts general law, Chapter 16632, Section 32. And further, that non-substantive changes in the numbering and heading of the bylaw be permitted in order for it to be in compliance with the format of Dover Town Code.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. I think it would be helpful to have a very brief explanation by our acting town administrator, Carl Valenti.
Mr. Moderator, so tonight's town meeting is going to be asked to update or make changes to a number of bylaws. In this case, our current bylaw provides for a gas and plumbing inspector, but it excludes what is known as a wiring inspector or the electrical inspector. So the change is just putting into the, our town bylaw, the addition of the wiring inspector, which would be appointed by our building inspector.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this motion? This is a majority vote. All those in favor, you press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 22 is on page 57 of the Blue Book, and it's to amend the general bylaw to deal with terms of offices for the constable. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the town's general bylaw, Article 14, Constables, Section 4-20, entitled Terms of Office Duties, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the following. There shall be three constables elected for a three-year term. Beginning with the 2025 town election, the constable receiving the most votes shall serve for a three-year term. The constable receiving the next highest number of votes shall serve for a two-year term. The constable receiving the third number of votes shall serve for a one-year term. Thereafter, each constable's term shall be for three years, such that one constable position is elected each year. And further, that non-substantive changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order for it to be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for the second. Again, I turn to the acting town administrator for a brief explanation. Mr. Valenti.
Mr. Moderator, in this case, currently, all three of our constables are up for election at the same time. So in that year, those constables cannot serve as constables at the ballot, at the town election. So by having staggered term, which we have in all of our other multi-elected official boards and committees, it'll provide that it'll always be at least two constables available to work at an election and also provide for continuity in those cases when a constable chooses not to run for reelection.
Thank you, Mr. Valenti. Any discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of this motion, press one for yes. Opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 23, which is on page 58 of your Blue Book, deals with the elimination of general bylaw pertaining to the finance committee on roads. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the town's general bylaw, Article 31, Finance Committee on Roads, Section 4-41, entitled Appointment Duties, by deleting it in its entirety. And further, that non-substantive changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. I'd like to turn briefly to John Jeffries of Board of Selectmen for a brief explanation.
Mr. Moderator, as Mr. Valenti mentioned and Ms. Hunter alluded to in our opening remarks, the Board of Selectmen and the continuing effort is modernizing and removing bylaws that are unnecessary. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor, press one for yes. Opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Very good. Motion carries. Article 24, page 59, relates to elimination of the tree committee. Mr. Smith, again, page 59.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the town's general bylaw, Article 36, Tree Committee, Section 4-46, entitled Appointment, Consultation with a Tree Warden, Report, by deleting it in its entirety. And further, that non-substantive changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Mr. Jeffries, again, for a brief explanation.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen encourages all members of the town to direct their attention and their interest in trees to the newly-formed Tree Preservation Committee under the guidelines of our Valerie Lynn and her committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, again, this is a majority vote. If you're in favor, press one. If you're opposed, press two. You may vote now. Okay, the motion carries. Article 25, page 59, amend the general bylaws to deal with committee membership of the Capitol Budget Committee. Mr. Magowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the town's general bylaw, Article 21, Capitol Budget Committee, Section 4-28, entitled Appointment Vacancies, by deleting in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Section 4-28, Appointment Vacancies. There shall be a seven-member Capitol Budget Committee appointed as follows. One member of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the warrant committee, all of whom shall be appointed by and from their respective boards to one-year terms, and four members-at-large serving three-year terms. Each year, one or more members-at-large shall be appointed to a three-year term by the above-named appointees and the members-at-large then currently serving. Any vacancy shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term in the manner of the original appointment. And further, that non-substantive changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Thank you, Mr. Magowski. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Barry Golden, did you want to provide a brief explanation? Is Barry still here?
So Barry isn't here. I can provide a...
So Barry isn't here. I can provide a brief explanation.
Okay, Robin Hunter then. Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
So basically, all this is doing is replacing a member from Long Range Planning, which is a committee that's been disbanded to an at-large member maintaining capital budgets at seven.
You're going to have to speak up, Robin. Try that again. Thank you.
All right. What we're doing here is reorganizing the Capital Budget Committee. We're removing a Long Range Planning member. That committee has been disbanded, and we're replacing that member with another at-large member, maintaining the committee at seven.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or discussions on this motion? Hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Again, if you're in favor, press 1 for yes. Opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 26, page 60, increased real estate and MVE demand fee. Ms. Kenny?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the town treasure collector to charge for each written demand an amount of $15 for unpaid real estate, personal property, and the motor vehicle excise taxes to be added to and collected as part of the tax as authorized by Chapter 60, Section 15 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Kender, for the second. Brief explanation by Mr. Valenti?
Mr. Moderator, under state law, demand fees, which is the term used in law, but it's really a late fee, can only be set by town meeting. And our demand fee, as long as anybody knows, has only been $5. We surveyed 50 communities, and the average for those 50 communities is $15.25. We're recommending a $15 demand fees in those cases where a real estate bill or motor vehicle excise bill is not paid in time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valenti. Any questions or discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote then on Article 26. If you're in favor of the motion, press 1 for yes. Opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 27, it's on page 60 of your Blue Book, as to amend general bylaws pertaining to the Long Range Planning Committee. Ms. McCormick?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the town's general bylaw, Article 22, Long Range Planning Committee, by deleting it in its entirety. And further, that non-substantive changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCormick. Do I hear a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. Ms. Hunter, would you like to provide a brief explanation?
This is disbanding the Long Range Planning Committee. It has not met in many years now, and its function has been absorbed by capital budgets and warrant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote on this motion. If you're in favor, press 1 for yes. Opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, Article 28 is a citizen's petition relating to the installation of a sidewalk on Cross Street. Mr. Kender, could you state the citizen's petition, or Ms. Citizen's motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash a sum of $45,000 for the purpose of engineering and constructing a sidewalk to the Chickering School along Cross Street, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. The sponsor of this is Rick Garren. Rick, would you like to make your presentation now?
Speaking to the microphone. Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Rick Garren, 28 Valley Road. That doesn't look like the presentation I have, but I guess I can speak to it. The presentation I...
This is what you gave.
This is what I sent on Tuesday.
This is what we got from you.
Yeah, that was the first one, but I sent this on that Tuesday night. Okay, well, I'll speak to this anyways. I'm just going to go through the presentation I have. So I've asked for a sidewalk at Cross Street. Right now, the current Center Street sidewalk ends at the Cross Street intersection, and the reason why I've asked for this particular sidewalk is because there's been an increase in traffic since the early start-time change back in 2019. It was, I believe, it was the fall of 2020, 2019, but there's been an increase in traffic. And so I'm just asking for the town to, and basically, create an extension to the existing Center Street sidewalk to Chickering. It's really unfortunate that this presentation doesn't show the pictures that I actually sent to the town. I guess I'm a little disappointed with that. But for those of you who've driven that road before Cross Street, it's rather narrow. And when I initially went before the Warrant Committee and asked for the sidewalk, they had some objections. One of them was they didn't know the cost, which we were able to determine. That's why we're asking for $45,000. And another reason was there was a concern that existing residences would be impacted by that. Currently, the Cross Street road width is 24 feet, and that's actually a little narrower than some other spots, a paved roadway. The town actually owns 40 feet right of way down the center of Cross Street, so give or take the survey information, the town owns eight feet on both sides of that roadway. So this wouldn't, to the best of my knowledge, would impede on existing butters. So that's why I'm asking for the sidewalk. Currently, there is a way to walk to Chickering Elementary School through the Dedham Ave area, but those of you who might be familiar with the access to Chickering Elementary through Chickering Fields, there's about 280 yards of, I guess you could say, visibility that needs to be overcome by either a patrol officer on Dedham Street driving by, or some patrol officer actually circling the Chickering driveway. About 280 yards, they'd have to look down that walkway towards Chickering Fields to get a bird's-eye view of children or anybody walking in that area, whereas this would give them that field of vision to about 80 yards, diminishing it, rather, increasing the safety of the road itself and the walkway for the children. So I'm simply asking for a sidewalk to be extended from Center Street to where the entrance to the wooded area of the Chickering property. So this wouldn't even reach where the turn-in is to the buses and the existing traffic. So as you can see from that drawing right there, there's no other slide, is there? Okay, all right. Well, so that shows the actual wooded area from Cross Street, and I'm asking for a painted crosswalk to the existing sidewalk at Chickering Elementary. And as you can see, oh, that's a much better view. That's actually the handout I was looking for. So as you can see, between the two red points, that's the 280-yard field division you have, you can see the ball fields. And then between the two yellow dots, that would be the actual 80-yard visibility for a patrol officer to be able to see. So it's much safer crossing. But as I can tell you, in the mornings, it's pretty tricky down that road, turning in. And my concern is even, this year, we didn't see it as much because we didn't have as much snow as we've had in subsequent years. But to plow that space would be, to not have a walkway and somebody walking on that road, which we've seen a number of times, is you've got to slow down considerably to try to get into Chickering. So that's why I'm asking for the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or a discussion? Okay, Ms. Kenny is coming to the microphone. And sir, would you like to come down to the microphone as well?
Good evening. My name is Kate Kenny, 7 Cross Street. Very familiar with the area that's been proposed. Couple of questions I have is, after speaking to the Assessors' Office, the Highway Department, and a municipal attorney, I was told that there was no way to determine the impact on easements without a proper survey. So that's point one. Point two is that we already have a very robust walk-to-school program that's going along Dedham and through the Chickering Fields, allows the children to go Dedham onto the libraries. And I just don't think this is a needed project. My concern is, and we've sat here all night listening to a lot of public works projects, a lot of capital projects, these have all been properly vetted. They've gone in front of the Planning Board, they've gone in front of Capital Budget, and they're vetted. In 2008, the Planning Board put out guidelines for sidewalks. That includes proposed hearing to discuss trees that would be removed. On our property alone, it would be 10 to 14 trees would be required to be cut down. It is a scenic road. So there's a whole process that should be undertaken. We have 3.6 miles of sidewalks in town right now. I don't think we want to really increase this unless we've really vetted this. And then, a little bit of a safety concern, it has not been spoken about by the petitioner, but there's a proposed crosswalk that goes from Center Street and Cross Street across Center Street. A crosswalk must have a destination. So a destination is either a point, an aimed point, or a sidewalk. There is no sidewalk on the other side of Center Street. So questions, what is the point of destination? And that's a very dangerous area. I would not want my child to cross the street there. It is a very high-traffic area, a very aggressive speed area, and given the fact that the Police Department places a cruiser with great regularity in the parking lot, abutting Precious Beginnings Daycare Center as recently as the 18th of April. So I'd really like to ask for you to turn down this petition because, one, I don't think it's needed, and, two, I don't think that's a safe point to have children cross.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. So I talked to Kyle about this. There is no, we've dropped the, I've dropped the ask for the crosswalk at Center Street because of that very reason, that there is no sidewalk on the other side. Certainly, it's not unusual for the town to have a crosswalk that goes to nowhere. Across from 8 Walpole Street, there's a crosswalk that goes to a rock on the other side of the road, but it's not an ADA-approved rock for handicap access. But that doesn't matter. We're not asking anymore for that crosswalk because the design engineer made it clear to me, and that was not in the ask for the $45,000. So we're not seeking a crosswalk across Center Street any longer. This has all been a learning process for me. And I can honestly say that there are existing properties. I did extensive research, Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. There are actually two properties I found that have 20-foot easements for setbacks for sidewalks in Dover, and that's to meet the existing terrain and topography and trees and things like that. One of the pictures that wasn't up here was 34 Center Street. There's, the sidewalk actually goes up around 20 feet up into a property and then down. And so the proposal that I have is not to impede on any existing trees or any existing mailboxes. I had a pretty detailed picture, so it would be done the Dover way. It wouldn't be, let's mow down a bunch of trees, let's pretend this is Newton or Newton. It is not. My desire, and the pictures that I took have been very thoughtful, and it wasn't in this particular presentation, that actually showed that you can actually put that sidewalk walkway in without impeding existing trees in mailboxes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, sir?
Steve Lanzicki, 11 Cross...
You're going to have to speak into the microphone. Sorry, these are not very sensitive.
Steve Lanzicki, 11 Cross Street. So I'm also potentially impacted by this. I think, as Kate had said earlier, I think the whole process has been a little bit uninformed. I think if anyone looks at their Blue Book, there was no cost estimate provided before tonight. The actual easements that are being mentioned now, nothing's been communicated to the property owners that would be impacted. The other part of this that keeps getting talked about, it's about safety for kids, Chickering's K through 5 grade, these kids are not walking around. I live right next to the school. These people are not, there's not kids walking back and forth to school, even through the sidewalks to town center. So what the sidewalk does is connects to Precious Beginnings, which he's very interested in. So I just think everyone should be aware of that before voting. So I would remind people of the committee's recommendation is no. So I think it's been vetted already. So I'd ask people to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments, gentlemen? Yes, sir? Press the microphone.
Sure. Chris Cotton, Abutter, 10 Cross Street. Just a couple of thoughts. One is, I lived there since 2002. I work out of the house most of the time. I don't see a lot of children walking on Cross Street. And so I'm not sure the families are avoiding it or just not seeing it as a need. Secondly, I haven't been contacted by anybody about this proposal as an abutter. And third, I had to do my driveway over, and it cost $20,000. I can't imagine that the town is going to spend $45,000 to put a sidewalk in. I don't think it's been thought fully through for us to decide tonight to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments?
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to those comments?
Very briefly, sir. Very briefly. Go ahead.
To respond to what was just said, the actual costs are much lower. We've added 20% in the event that this project is done a year or two from now. And in regards to children, I can tell you right now, if tomorrow, if, I'm sorry, if Wednesday is a sunny day, you're going to see children walking in the center of town on their way to Dover Cafe. And these are elementary students, and they're certainly going the other way because obviously the people of 10, 11, and 7 know that they're not going to walk on that street because it's dangerous. They're going to take the walk through Chickering Fields, down to Dedham Ave, and walk up to town that way. And it's, I don't think it's a big ask for this town to have a sidewalk to an elementary school. And for transparency purposes, yes, Precious Beginnings is right there at that intersection. And all we ask is that if there's snow on the ground and children are going to, let's say, the Catholic Church for CCD classes, if they can somehow walk over the snow and go through the path between the woods to get to the Catholic Church, great for them. But if it's snowing out, there's no way, it's very difficult to try to traverse that area in front of 7 and 11 Cross Street to get there safely to Center Street.
15 seconds, Mr. Garren.
It just seems to me that we owe the younger families of Dover an opportunity to have some flexibility for their children to walk to town. And there are plenty of children that are going to be downtown if it's an early release day on Wednesday. So I see it because I'm in town Monday through Friday during the day. So again, this is for younger residents in town. I mean, the older residents, yeah, you certainly aren't going to benefit from this, but certainly younger ones will.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garren. Any further questions or discussion? I think we're ready to move to a vote on this. So this is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the motion for the sidewalk, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press 2 for no. You may vote now. Jessica, is that working? Okay. Oh. I guess we should vote now then, Jessica? Okay, vote Okay, motion does not carry. Article 29 is transferred from free cash to stabilize the tax rate. Ms. Herman?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $1,200,000 from the free cash in the Treasury to stabilize the tax rate for the ensuing fiscal year and authorize the Board of Assessors to use the same to stabilize the tax rate.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. So this is Article 29. It's on page 61 of your Blue Book. Is there any discussion on this matter? Is there any discussion on this matter? Okay, let's move to a vote, then. If you're in favor of this motion, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. Motion carries. Ms. Herman, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this annual town meeting be dissolved.
Okay, I hear, do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, this is a non-debatable motion, so. Would do a voice vote, a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.